Okay, y'all ready? Okay, good morning, and I'll call to order the March 3rd, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, and our first order of business will be our Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, I'm going to have Sheriff Wilkie come forward for our invocations. So if everyone would please stand for the pledge.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to comply with the United States Constitution and to the Republic of the Free State, one nation, one God, and this is liberty and justice and all the others. Please sit down.
On September 14th, 1814, Mr. Francis Scott Key found himself in a Navy vessel, the British Royal Navy, watching a battle occur at Fort McHenry. The battle for Baltimore raged. What most people don't know is that the United Kingdom at the time had declared that the War of 1812 would result in the recolonization of our newly-formed country, and thus, we were fighting again for independence, often referred to as the Second War of Independence. What is also little known is when he wrote that, we're very familiar with the first stanza and the first verse, but I would argue the last one is more important. And it says this, "Oh, thus be it ever, when free men shall stand between their loved home and the war's desolation. Blessed with victory and peace, may the heaven-rescued land praise the power that hath made and preserved us, the nation. Then conquer we must, when our cause it is just; and this be our motto, and God is our trust." I often hear from folks that our county was founded by deists and those who weren't men of faith, and I would present to you that this is evidence. The contrary is true. And perhaps it would be more fitting for me to share, of course, I've had these up, my phone is not there now, to share a verse of scripture with you. I did a research this morning, and there are multiple verses about trust, one of which in the Book of Proverbs says, "Leave not on your own understanding, but trust in the Lord with all your heart. He does not create in us a spirit of fear. Fear is not of God." Leadership, integrity, strength, those things which our agency lives by are actually biblical things, and they don't stand in fear, they stand in strength. Much of that strength was demonstrated at that time in 1814. I would invite you to join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to gather here, conduct business as a government of elected officials. May the will of the people prevail, but give us not a spirit of fear, oh Lord, but a spirit of strength. May we go forward, may we do what's best in the interest of this county and those who reside in it. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, our next order of business would be public hearings, but we don't have one this morning. And then next will be our public comment session. If you would, please limit your comments to three minutes, and speaking through the microphone, and Haven will let you know when your three minutes is up, and if you would finish your thought, and we'll move on. So I do have one person signed up to speak this morning, Gregory Todd Jones. Welcome.
Good morning, Councilor, or Commissioners. I'm not one to speak in public, but I come here today, and I look up here, and I see the Fourth Commandment, it says, "Remember the Sabbath day and to keep it holy." And I can remember a long time when you couldn't shoot a firearm in Haywood County on Sunday. Lord, help me. I can remember up until probably, I was in my twenties, I'm sorry that I'm not, I don't have that information in front of me, but God created this beautiful place we call home and this whole world in six days, and He rested on the seventh. I just think it's, I think it's in our best interest, and it would do well if the Commissioners would consider going back to the way it used to be when I was a kid, up until, I think, my early twenties. Let me backpedal since I'm starting to calm down a little bit. I'm a United States Marine, I served with our country, I got an honorable discharge, I've lived here my whole entire life, I'm getting ready to be 50 years old. I try to, I'm not the best Christian by no means, I try, I try to be good, I try to do right, and my main reason I'm here today is to hopefully consider going back to where there's no shooting of firearms, shooting guns on Sunday. We've got six other days that we can do that. And pretty much in a nutshell, that's it, that's all I've got, and I appreciate y'all's time, and God bless y'all, and God bless Haywood County.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, okay, our next order, that'll close our public comment session. Our next order of business will be constituent concerns. Does anybody, let's see, I don't have any formal, does anybody have anything they need to come in on this morning? No? Anything, David? Okay, okay, I don't have anything either. Okay, so next will be administrative agency reports and presentations, and we want to have a presentation of the county's fiscal year 2024 audited financial statements, and we have Gul Kilian CPA Group PA Partner Travis Keever here this morning to present that. And usually, we have this around the last meeting in December there, and because of the good old flood, we weren't able to do that. So Travis, I know your office was, or I guess you guys had some flood-affected reasons why you couldn't do it then.
Yeah, I think the flood threw everything off the last few months.
Yeah, but I appreciate you coming out this morning.
Yeah, thank you.
And you would've been here a little bit sooner, but we had scheduling issues, so thank you for coming, go ahead.
Yeah, for sure, and we'll definitely, hopefully, life gets back to normal for all of us a little bit in 2025, and we'll be back out here in December or January like we're accustomed to being. Well, thank you all for letting me speak today, and thank you for letting us serve as your auditor again for fiscal year '25. Our firm has been your auditor for a number of years now, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the county. Also, I want to say thanks to Christian and the staff of the Finance Department, as well as all the staff at DSS for their hard work and cooperation in completing the audit. As usual, all the county staff has been incredibly responsive and accommodating, they've shown a tremendous amount of professionalism, and have been a pleasure to work with in working their way through our audit, and so we appreciate that very much, it makes the process go a lot smoother. I'll go ahead and kind of summarize the audit results at a high level, and then get into just a couple of financial statistics, I'll be pretty brief this morning. On January 30th, we finalize the audit report for Haywood County for the year ending June 30, 2024. The objective of an audit is for us to provide reasonable, not absolute assurance, that the financial statements are fairly stated and the county is in compliance with major program requirements. An audit includes examining evidence on a test basis to support the amounts and disclosures in your financial statements, using our professional judgment, and also evaluating management's accounting policies and estimates. That's a long way of saying that the numbers in the financial statements belong to the county. Our job is to audit those numbers and issue an opinion on them, and so we've issued an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the financial statements of the county, which of course is what everybody wants when they have an audit. We also do a fair amount of compliance work for the county around the federal and state grant money that you all receive, and same as the financial statements, the compliance with those grants is the responsibility of the county. Our job is to come in and audit your compliance with those requirements, and we've also issued an unmodified opinion on compliance. That means we believe the county has complied in all material respects with the significant terms of the grant agreements that were subject to a program-specific audit or a single audit this year, and there were 10 of those programs in total. Within your financial statements, there were 22 governmental funds included in our audit, including the General Fund. This represented total assets of $152 million, total revenues of $138 million, and total expenditures of $129 million. With your federal and state single audit, like I mentioned, there were 10 total programs. We had six federal programs that we audited, which totaled $7.4 million in expenditures. Four state programs totaling $1.9 million in expenditures. You had total federal and state grant expenditures of just shy of $17 million that were covered as part of your compliance audit. So a couple of years ago, the local government commission started a benchmarking and key performance indicator program, where we essentially, once the audit is complete, we evaluate your financial statements and other metrics against a series of performance indicators that they've established. If any of those benchmarks or performance indicators are tripped, for lack of a better word, we have to discuss it in a public meeting. You guys had two of those this year, which are relatively minor. We had expenditures in excess of appropriation in one department, in the Education Department, it's a simple timing difference, we received an ABC distribution right at the end of the fiscal year that was spent, it's almost like there wasn't time to get it on a budget amendment before the end of the year, so that was kind of a one-off. We saw no systemic issues with the county's budgetary system or encumbrance system, so again, that to us appears to be a one-time occurrence. And then we had a deficit fund balance in the county building renovations fund of $390,000. Again, this is a timing difference between the timing that the money went out and certain grant reimbursements came back in, so that'll be, I imagine that'll be resolved in FY '25. So then just a few key financial statistics, this is a pie chart showing the General Fund revenue breakdown, just like we expect to see out here in Haywood County, ad valorem taxes makes up the biggest chunk of your general fund revenue, about $56 million, 55% of total revenues. You can see those categories as compared to last year, they're all pretty flat. We saw local option sales tax dip just a little bit, we're starting to see that pretty much everywhere, as some of the American Rescue Plan-related spending starts to slow down just a little bit, inflation starts to back off just a little bit, and so I would expect that to continue to maybe be flat or down just a little bit in the coming years, but we'll see what happens. Expenditures, again, this is a fairly normal-looking chart for out here for what we're used to seeing in the past. Public Safety, Human Services, and Education are kind of the three big-ticket items for you guys. Public Safety's 33%, Education and Human Services each represented about 22%, 23% of expenditures. As compared to last year, you can see Public Safety was up just a little bit, I think that was due to some pretty significant capital purchases that were made during FY '24, ambulances and other vehicles and equipment. Everything else was pretty flat year over year. Fund balance, your 2024 fund balance, the blue bar represents total fund balance, the gray bar represents what the state likes to refer to as available fund balance, which is essentially your cash on hand minus your current accounts payable at June 30th. So your total fund balance, you can see kind of a steady increase, it got up to right at $62 million this year, I believe, which is an increase of about 10 or 11 million over last year, and your available fund balance made it up over 50 million this year, I think it was about 52, which again was a steady increase over last year. The state likes to look at that available fund balance number compared to your total general fund expenditures, so you can see there, the county has sort of an informal goal of having available fund balance of 24.5% of expenditures, which is basically you guys having about three months' worth of expenditures on hand. Counties in your population group, 50,000 to 100,000 in population across the state, were about 42% or 43% this year, Haywood County was at 54%. So what that tells me is the county has good liquidity, pretty good financial position, especially compared to your peers across the state. Couple of property tax statistics, of course, the tax rate went up just a hair in 2024, valuation went up a little bit, and that led to an increase in current year collections of just shy of 3 million, about 2.7 million. Your collection rate stayed pretty steady, it was 98.3%, so a good strong collection rate. And this slide shows the outstanding debt in the county, this is a page that's actually in your financial statements, the far-left column shows your assessed property tax valuation, and then it shows the amount of debt year over year going back the last 10 years. Of course, the installment loan column jumped up a good bit in FY '24 because of the new, it's public safety debt, right, Christian, for the jail that was issued in FY '24? And that column all the way over to the right, a lot of people like to take a look at that, that's net debt per capita in Haywood County is $752 of debt per citizen in the county. I think that's about all I have, I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has any, and once again, thanks for letting us serve as your auditor again this year.
Okay, thank you, Travis. I just want to compliment Christian and Bryant and their department heads, and that's amazing what y'all have done, and I never, ever thought I would see that number for the fund balance, so that's a great, I know both of you all are vanguards against that, I guess that'd be the word, to keep that from happening, so from it falling too low, because I do remember, I think I've said that in 2008 or '09, I believe our fund balance was 9%, and the state didn't like that too much, but we've got, definitely turned that around and got it back up where it needs to be, so thank you all for all that. Does anybody else want to say anything? Okay, what can you say?
Pretty good. All right, thank you all.
All right, thank you, Travis. Hope you all get going well again. Okay, very good report. Okay, I do not have a discussion or adjustment to the agenda. Next will be the consent agenda, and there are six items on the consent agenda, does anybody have any questions on any of those that they'd like to have kind of confirmed?
I had one question, I guess Bryant might be able to answer, the Johnson Controls item on the consent agenda, is that just to replace aged-out equipment, or is that anything to do with the new jail, or what is that for?
These are replacement security cameras for the Justice Center. The cameras are at the end of their useful life, and this replaces those, and they were budgeted in current year. Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, here and now, I'll entertain a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicating a "aye"?
Aye.
You want to post? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to our next order of business will be a regular agenda. We want to request, number one is to request approval of a resolution designating our county manager, Brian Moorhead, as the primary agent and finance director, and so, and our finance director, Christian Owen, as the secondary agent for the Hazard Mitigation Program Disaster Number DR 4827-NC, Emergency Management Coordinator, Zach Kuntz is here to talk to that.
Good morning, Commissioners, I hope everybody's doing well this morning. This morning, before you've got a resolution that is part of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Process Program for us to select a designated agent, which would be the county manager, along with the secondary agent, which would be our finance director, Christian Owen, to where we are able to accept applications for hazard mitigation when it comes to mitigation, acquisition, landslides, and elevation of structures related to Tropical Storm Helene. So if you remember, we had to do this prior to Tropical Storm Fred, for us to be able to allow the different departments in the county to interact with the citizens, receive applications, submit those to the state, and this is one of the parts of that grant process to allow us to be able to continue forward and push those applications on.
Do we have any questions on that? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion, we approve item one.
I'm going.
Give her a second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
You want to post? Okay, it's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Zach. I appreciate all you and your departments have been doing and has done and will be doing, I'm sure. Okay, number two, under regular agenda, is to request approval of an amendment, number one, to the Disaster Debris Removal Agreement between Haywood County and Southern Disaster Recovery LLC, or SDR, in compliance with amendments to the State of North Carolina Agreement with SDR, which broadens the scope of services to accommodate damage from Hurricane Helene. And our deputy county manager, Chris Boyd, is here to speak for that. Morning, Chris.
Morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This resolution is to acknowledge the contract amendment that North Carolina Department of Public Safety bind through the state of North Carolina did with the existing contract of SDR. In working with FEMA, the Department of Public Safety determined that the rates were not sufficient enough based on other states and other projects, Georgia, South Carolina, Florida. We experienced some difficulty getting contractors here for debris removal, not just Haywood County, but in North Carolina. So I think for a period of months, they negotiated a revision to the contract, this is accepting the revision to the contract that the state and FEMA has approved with SDR. There's some other items that they added that we're not choosing to activate currently because we're not to the point or have even determined that we needed, that some of the amendments were kind of some synagogue leaning type tree, some silt and dirt removal that didn't have in the original contract. So there's a couple of things that we may ask for later, that was the contract amendment number two, the state did. Currently, we're only looking at contract number one, amendment number one to the contract.
Okay, if you would repeat what that amendment is.
Amendment one?
Yeah, what is it?
Amendment one is for debris removal, very specifically, a change of pricing, whether it be right-of-way, whether it be personal property debris, or stream debris.
Okay, and the pricing would be for, what would that be, pricing for the?
I don't know the exact, there's so many different numbers. Management of TDMS has one number, Cubic Yards Hauled has a number, Cubic Yards Hauled from the TDMS, Final Disposal has a number, there was a 36-page document with price changes that I can't quote those to you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
If you want to ask additional questions, Roger Dale with SDR is here, he may be able to explain some of those.
Just, and Chris touched on it, these are approved changes by state emergency management, and FEMA has also approved those, so it does increase what we're paying SDR, but we will get full reimbursement through Christian and her folks. We feel like we'll be paying more out, we'll be waiting on a larger reimbursement from FEMA, but our understanding is all of this is approved. Roger can fill in more specific details if you'd like him to.
Would you like to read?
Yeah, I think I've got a pretty good grasp on it, this is just approved rates from the state EM and FEMA has agreed, and hopefully, this is just passed through money on our part, and we'll get reimbursed from FEMA, so it's the same agreement we had earlier, it's just an increase in their fee per cubic yard according to your schedule.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So by doing this, is the end result we're hoping for is to have more contractors?
I believe, I can't speak for the state and why they chose this, but in conversations, I've heard that comment, that we suffered on the ability to get those contractors in North Carolina, not just Haywood County.
Because we weren't competitive in?
We were not competitive in pricing.
Can that be implemented, how quickly?
Effective upon vote by the Board of Commissioners. The state did it in February, or maybe 1st of February, January 30th, so it's effective if this board chooses to approve it.
Okay.
And it will not be retro to what's already been?
I was looking, I was trying to see it on there.
No, it's effective now for debris going forward, it's not retro to what we've already done.
Chris, is this expected to get more help in here and get it done quicker, or what?
Again, I can't, I can't speak for the state and why they did this, but in conversations, that seemed to be the driving force, that we were really lacking in the ability to get the contractors because of the reduced price. You know, we here in Haywood County, I don't think experienced quite as much difficulty as some of the other counties because we didn't have the amount of debris. Some of the other counties had a lot more debris, and they weren't able to move it in a quick fashion. We've been, I think, pretty fortunate here to have moved, just in Haywood County, not including the towns, about 25,000 cubic yards with about, I think, 600 loads moved, so we're in pretty good shape at this point for Haywood County. But I think some of the others, maybe Avery Mitchell, Otaga Henderson, they had a million cubic yards of debris.
Okay, so can we have a motion to approve item two of the regular agenda?
I'm making a motion to approve item two, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Because I know, okay, okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, you want to post? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you, Chris. Okay, item number three of the regular agenda is to request approval of construction easement between Haywood County and Duke Energy at property along Piska Drive and Max Thompson Road. Go ahead, Frank.
Out at Max Thompson Road, there was a power pole, two power poles, that sit on the Haywood County property, and Duke is relocating those poles. They were actually sort of more over on us, now they're coming a little bit closer to the DOT's road right-of-way. Duke had to replace them, I guess probably because of compromise because of the floodwaters. We have to give them an easement to the extent that those poles are on our property. We're still wondering a little bit. We're still wondering a little bit about, at that exact location, whether they're on DOT's ownership property of this road, which is nominally 100-foot right of way, but it broadens out when it intersects with Max Thompson. Okay? And so they relocated these two poles. And in abundance of caution, they've submitted a request for us for an easement to replace, they're actually moving the location of the poles, but to relocate them. So we have to grant them an easement. We grant them an easement. DOT grants them whatever encroachment permit they need. Boomity boom, they're done. And it's very technical in the sense from a real estate lawyer's point of view, but it's, as a practical matter, you wouldn't notice a great deal of difference. There used to be two power poles beside the road. Now there's two different power poles beside the road in a little bit different location. Questions?
Anybody got any questions?
Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I know the area very well. I understood what they had to do. The flood actually took that power line out. It went around Max Thompson. It pancaked it and they couldn't even get to it to fix it for like two or three weeks before they got that road opened up. And there were several people that were out of power and they basically just ran a little spur line up side of Highway 110 to that intersection that you referred to. So I know a lot of people were very happy when the power came on about three or four days later, so. Me being one of them.
Okay. Okay, so can we have a motion to approve that item three?
Second.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
You want to post. Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes the regular agenda. We're just moving right along. And we'll go to appointments. And we request approval for appointments of Mary Coker to the veterinarian member position and Barbara Timmington to the public member position on the HHSA board. Now Brandon, let me say Brandon couldn't be here this morning. He had a business obligation that he had to do, but he's out of town. But he's usually on that board, but I would assume that they approve these folks.
I don't have the paperwork I typically do, but I was here.
I was saying, yes, so he's back there shaking his head, yes, so good. Okay, so anybody got any questions on that?
I always appreciate folks that are willing to serve.
Yes, that's true. Yeah, sometimes that board can be, it's a very, they have to educate the public on what's going on. So I know sometimes that can be hard. So can we have a motion to approve item one of appointments?
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. That's unanimous. Okay, item number two is to request approval of one at-large position by vote of the Haywood County Planning Board. And I just want to make a note that before the February 17th meeting, which was their last meeting, the Commissioners held a special meeting to interview candidates for the planning board and voted in open session on a farmer member and an at-large member. At the time, Ann Marie Pacella was announced as the at-large member, but after the meeting, when the clerk and deputy were sorting through the paperwork from the meeting, they recognized that the votes for the at-large member had been incorrectly tallied. To ensure accuracy, we were voting again on the same candidates for the at-large position. And they, our staff apologizes for the inconvenience of this. So if you would vote for one.
How many fingers and toes you guys got over there?
You can see the ballots were taken from this side of the room.
I had to jab a little bit. I mean, five, you got four today. It's gonna be easy. Well, it might not be easier. You don't have a tiebreaker, so. We have to do this again.
I will say we've consolidated that, those ballots a little bit, so it makes it a little bit easier.
Easy to count.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Very good. Okay, that concludes the agenda, other than the closed session. So I'll entertain a motion. We go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143 381 11A4, Economic Development, and 143 381 11A5 with acquisition of real property. So, okay.
I make that motion. We'll go into closed session for those, for those reasons that you read, so.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we'll be in closed session when we get into the Commissioners Meeting Room in the back.
Okay, we've returned from closed session, so does anybody have anything further? Tommy, of course.
Just to reiterate what a good job our finance people have made. The highlight of today's meeting, I'm sure, was the audit from Gold and King. Strong financial position our county's in through troubled waters over the last two or three years. And I appreciate the conservative view that we have taken, knowing that we've had the jail project and some big things coming up. And I think you have positioned the county well. And we want to keep it up. You know, we don't want to drop the ball. We want to continue with the trend that we have going and remain strong. So I appreciate Christian and Brian and the staff for doing that. Definitely the highlight of the meeting today.
Okay, very good. Yeah, and we, our fund balance will be hit pretty hard from all the flood stuff for next year, so probably won't be as pleasant, but who knows? Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, I would favor say aye. Aye, okay, we're adjourned. Everybody be safe.